We now have nine members of the council present, but we are going to begin our presentations today. And we're going to begin with Councilmember Gruehl. We now have nine members of the council present, but we are going to begin our presentations today. And we're going to begin with Councilmember Gruehl. We now have nine members of the council present, but we are going to begin our presentations today. And we're going to begin with Councilmember Gruehl. Thank you, Madam President. As my honorees are coming up here today, you all know that we have a lot of restaurants we all go to, some good, some great. Then there's some where you feel like it's family. And I'm talking about that restaurant in your neighborhood that you can expect to be welcomed with a cheerful smile and hello as you walk through the door. The waitress already knows what you like to drink, and most importantly, whatever you order will be delicious. In our wonderful diverse city of Los Angeles, we have a lot of restaurants to choose from. But there are few like Art's Delicatessen in Studio City. And I know many of my colleagues, Jan Perry was just telling me she had been there several times with Stanley Hirsch and others. And this past June, as part of LA Times Magazine's yearly restaurant guide, one of those great restaurants that still has that feeling of home was recognized for its one-of-a-kind pastrami sandwich. For almost 50 years, the San Fernando Valley was able to keep this restaurant a great secret. But no more. Now all of Southern California can come out to Studio City and enjoy a pastrami en rye or try one of their great soups. The success behind Art's Delicatessen is really not only Art Ginsberg himself, but the family, as you see behind me. All of them are there whenever you go, at least one or two of them, and come and sit at your table and talk to you. And particularly Art and his family, we talk about politics and about what's happening in Studio City and when is that parking lot going to be built on Ventura Boulevard. But his leadership and vision in that of the family, of the Ginsberg family, has done a lot more than just from the front doors of Art's Deli. He has not only worked tirelessly to make this a restaurant that works in our Studio City area, but he's also worked in the community through the Business Improvement District. As I mentioned, through our trying to get for years, I think Xavier Slavsky was the first to propose a parking lot. And it is only now that we're able to actually see that come to fruition. He has also worked countless hours on various organizations such as Valley College and has been one of their trustees and worked hard to improve. And if you know anything about Valley College these days, it is an exciting place. We're going to build new facilities and refurbish that as well. So we've also had him participate in tree planting on Studio City and new lights on Ventura Boulevard. But I remember after the Northridge earthquake, if all of you remember, Art's Delicatessen was one of those that was severely damaged. And I think it was nine months, Art? Nine months that it was out of business. And everyone hoped and prayed that it would come back, and it did. And I remember Mayor Reardon, one of the things he did after the Northridge earthquake as well, was have a special event there at Art's Deli when it opened to remind people we were back in business, the San Fernando Valley was a place to go, and particularly, Art's Deli was a place to go. I am so proud that it's in the second council district. Until last July, a year ago, it was in Jack Weiss's district. But I thought it was in mine, I still counted it as mine, in the San Fernando Valley. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Art and his family for all that they do in the community and also invite all of you to come to Art's Deli if you've never been there. It's a great place. They do welcome you. They have seen me through running for office, getting married, having a baby, and I know through many other life changes, but it's a place where you can feel like home. So let's give a big round of applause and ask Art for Art's Delicatessen.
I'd like to introduce my wife, Sandy Ginsberg, my son Harold Ginsberg, and my daughter Roberto Mittendorf, who are running the store now. I'm semi-retired, and we greatly appreciate this honor that you're giving us. Thank you, Wendy.
Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Madam President. Art, it's a pleasure to see you here being recognized. I know that I've spent many of my Code Sevens with the LAPD at Art's Deli. And I know that every sandwich is a meal and every meal's a deal. It's been a wonderful place where many of the law enforcement officers have spent their comfortable relaxing 45 minutes. And I know that your charity work within the community, how you continually donate to the community of the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles, and it is a real tribute to you that that establishment has been there through thick and thin, through the changes that have taken place in that community. And my congratulations to you and your wonderful family. I remember maybe a month or so ago I saw you in another restaurant. We were eating another, I said, Art, do you eat at another restaurant? And also in the San Fernando Valley on Woodman Avenue, we were enjoying the fine delicacies at another ethnic restaurant, and it was delicious, but wonderful to see you. Congratulations to you and your family, and keep up the good work. Every sandwich is a meal and every meal is a deal. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. It is great to see all of you here. I know you well. I see you in temple. I see you in actually different temples, your temple and then the other temple we belong to. But it's wonderful to see you here. I only have the greatest things to say about not just your restaurant, but all of you as a family. It's one of my family's favorite restaurants and it has been for so long. And whenever we go there, we are treated like members of not just your family, but whoever is waiting on us that day, we're a member of her family as well. You guys, you're the best. All the work you've done for Federation and everything else over the years is something that people in the city are very appreciative of. And I'm just delighted that Wendy had the good sense to bring you all in here today. It's wonderful to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and thank you, Wendy. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Jan Perry.
Before we commence my actual presentation, we are going to recognize the National Anthem from the country of Ecuador. And I think one of the ladies here will cue the engineer to begin.
Could I ask everyone to rise?
Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. A brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. A brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. A brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. A brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. A brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti.
We now have nine members of the council present, but we are going to begin our presentations today. And we're going to begin with Councilmember Gruehl.
Thank you, Madam President. As my honorees are coming up here today, you all know that we have a lot of restaurants we all go to, some good, some great. Then there's some where you feel like it's family. And I'm talking about that restaurant in your neighborhood that you can expect to be welcomed with a cheerful smile and hello as you walk through the door. The waitress already knows what you like to drink, and most importantly, whatever you order will be delicious. In our wonderful diverse city of Los Angeles, we have a lot of restaurants to choose from. But there are few like Art's Delicatessen in Studio City. And I know many of my colleagues, Jan Perry was just telling me she had been there several times with Stanley Hirsch and others. And this past June, as part of LA Times Magazine's yearly restaurant guide, one of those great restaurants that still has that feeling of home was recognized for its one-of-a-kind pastrami sandwich. For almost 50 years, the San Fernando Valley was able to keep this restaurant a great secret. But no more. Now all of Southern California can come out to Studio City and enjoy a pastrami en rye or try one of their great soups. The success behind Art's Delicatessen is really not only Art Ginsberg himself, but the family, as you see behind me. All of them are there whenever you go, at least one or two of them, and come and sit at your table and talk to you. And particularly, Art and his family, we talk about politics and about what's happening in Studio City and when is that parking lot going to be built on Ventura Boulevard. But his leadership and vision in that of the family, of the Ginsberg family, has done a lot more than just from the front doors of Art's Deli. He has not only worked tirelessly to make this a restaurant that works in our Studio City area, but he's also worked in the community through the Business Improvement District. As I mentioned, through our trying to get for years, I think Xavier Slavsky was the first to propose a parking lot. And it is only now that we're able to actually see that come to fruition. He has also worked countless hours on various organizations such as Valley College and has been one of their trustees and worked hard to improve. And if you know anything about Valley College these days, it is an exciting place. We're going to build new facilities and refurbish that as well. So we've also had him participate in tree planting on Studio City and new lights on Ventura Boulevard. But I remember after the Northridge earthquake, if all of you remember, Art's Delicatessen was one of those that was severely damaged. And I think it was nine months, Art? Nine months that it was out of business. And everyone hoped and prayed that it would come back, and it did. And I remember Mayor Reardon, one of the things he did after the Northridge earthquake as well, was have a special event there at Art's Deli when it opened to remind people we were back in business, the San Fernando Valley was a place to go, and particularly, Art's Deli was a place to go. I am so proud that it's in the second council district. Until last July, a year ago, it was in Jack Weiss's district. But I thought it was in mine, I still counted it as mine, in the San Fernando Valley. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Art and his family for all that they do in the community and also invite all of you to come to Art's Deli if you've never been there. It's a great place. They do welcome you. They have seen me through running for office, getting married, having a baby, and I know through many other life changes, but it's a place where you can feel like home. So let's give a big round of applause and ask Art for Art's Delicatessen.
I'd like to introduce my wife, Sandy Ginsberg, my son Harold Ginsberg, and my daughter Roberto Mittendorf, who are running the store now. I'm semi-retired, and we greatly appreciate this honor that you're giving us. Thank you, Wendy.
Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Madam President. Art, it's a pleasure to see you here being recognized. I know that I've spent many of my Code Sevens with the LAPD at Art's Deli. And I know that every sandwich is a meal and every meal's a deal. It's been a wonderful place where many of the law enforcement officers have spent their comfortable relaxing 45 minutes. And I know that your charity work within the community, how you continually donate to the community of the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles, and it is a real tribute to you that that establishment has been there through thick and thin, through the changes that have taken place in that community. And my congratulations to you and your wonderful family. I remember maybe a month or so ago I saw you in another restaurant. We were eating another, I said, Art, do you eat at another restaurant? And also in the San Fernando Valley on Woodman Avenue, we were enjoying the fine delicacies at another ethnic restaurant, and it was delicious, but wonderful to see you. Congratulations to you and your family. And keep up the good work. Every sandwich is a meal and every meal is a deal. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. It is great to see all of you here. I know you well. I see you in temple. I see you in actually different temples, your temple and then the other temple we belong to. But it's wonderful to see you here. I only have the greatest things to say about not just your restaurant, but all of you as a family. It's one of my family's favorite restaurants and it has been for so long. And whenever we go there, we are treated like members of not just your family, but whoever is waiting on us that day, we're a member of her family as well. You guys, you're the best. All the work you've done for Federation and everything else over the years is something that people in the city are very appreciative of. And I'm just delighted that Wendy had the good sense to bring you all in here today. It's wonderful to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and thank you, Wendy. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Jan Perry.
Before we commence my actual presentation, we are going to recognize the National Anthem from the country of Ecuador. And I think one of the ladies here will cue the engineer to begin.
Could I ask everyone to rise?
Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. Los primeros regocijos del suelo Que soberbia al pichincha de cola. Me aclamaron por siempre señor Y vertieron su sangre por ti. Dios miró y aceptó el nuevo caso Y esa sangre fue realmente tuyo. Que otros lejos de como yo fue. Y en tu torno a brillar es su lindo. Salve mi patria, mi veses, fa patria. Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti, Gloria a ti. Ya tu pecho, tu pecho rebozo. Tu sin paz ya tu pecho rebozo. En tu frente, tu frente radio. Mas que el sol con el plomo su sien. muy expresivo de quien os habla del Congreso Nacional del Ecuador. Reconozco y valoro en sumo grado la posibilidad que habéis generado para estar presente en estos actos de la Semana Ecuatoriana, que genera el espacio adecuado para redificar los valores del civismo, ecuatorianidad, e identidad de la comunidad ecuatoriana asentada en Los Ángeles y en general en los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica. Correspondo profundamente las locuciones que se han señalado en el signo de bienvenida. Quiero decirles que somos muy gratos con la comunidad de Los Ángeles, que simbolizamos con Honduras su actitud para los ecuatorianos y ecuatorianas que se han sumado a la gran comunidad que habita en esta emblemática ciudad. La inmensa contribución de capacidad, energía, y constancia que es el aporte de los CONNacionales para el crecimiento, la prosperidad, y el esplendor de la gran ciudad de Los Ángeles. Nos da complacencia con su compromiso y con su lucha que estos hombres y mujeres se hayan ganado y sigan conquistando un lugar de respeto y reconocimiento en todos los Estados Unidos, en toda California, y ostensiblemente aquí en esta ciudad, en esta ciudad que admiro su intensa fortaleza, su particular identificación y capacidad de innovación. Aquí se han entretejido comunidades, gentes de diversos rincones de la tierra para formar una metrópoli con especial aliento productivo, social, y cultural. Hombres y mujeres de lenguas y culturas heterogéneas han encontrado aquí patria muy brás para echar raíces y para labrarse un mejor mañana. Con el producto de su carácter, aquí han podido convertir en realidad sus sueños de progreso. Aquí en esta comunidad, crisol de muchas raíces, conjunción de tantas vertientes, han hecho posible el ineludible albedrío a mejorar su condición de vida y otorgar esa misma oportunidad a su familia y en extensión a su patria, a su cultura, a sus orígenes. Los ecuatorianos y ecuatorianas herederos de una larga tradición de trabajo, convicción y lucha de cotidianidad de nuestras acciones, reivindicamos con el esfuerzo ese anhelo de patria, de cultura, y de historia. Hoy, a partir de la capacidad de trabajo y de una fortalecida amistad y cooperación, podemos iniciar una nueva etapa en la relación de los pueblos y comunidades. En este marco de nuevos y florecientes encuentros, es mucho lo que podemos hacer juntos en numerosos terrenos, entre los que destaco de manera especial la protección de los derechos de los ecuatorianos que viven y trabajan en el exterior. De nuestra parte, el Congreso Nacional desplegamos toda iniciativa, esfuerzo, y tarea para construir con empeños e ilusiones de los CONNacionales agrupados en diferentes organizaciones, de las que damos testimonio de su consagración de alcanzar legislación que consagre en los derechos universales del trabajo, la libertad, y el respeto a una vida digna y de realización plena. Desde el Congreso Nacional del Ecuador, en cooperación hacia otras entidades de la democracia ecuatoriana, desplegamos esfuerzos en la perspectiva de posibilitar su economía que genere empleos, que abra oportunidades para que todas las familias puedan progresar. En este contexto, valoramos superlativamente la contribución de los ecuatorianos y ecuatorianas que reciben, que residen allende las fronteras patrias. La contribución que canalizan hoy por hoy se constituye en el segundo rubro que alimenta y sostiene el presupuesto de la nación. Gracias, ecuatorianos, gracias, ecuatorianas, que habitan fuera de la patria. Ustedes son gente que no se han rendido. Han llegado a luchar, a trabajar, a construirse un porvenir que muchas veces se presentó y se presenta. Todavía, lamentablemente, en ocasiones se sigue presentando con muchos obstáculos, pero nunca se han doblegado. Tantas historias, tantos testimonios se han escrito con abnegación, con lágrimas. De ustedes hay una historia de lucha, de esfuerzo, pero también una historia de orgullo. Por eso, les digo que sigan batallando, que sigan siendo motivo de orgullo, que sigan ganando el respeto ciudadano, que sigan labrando los liderazgos efectivos y reales. El pueblo ecuatoriano, su Congreso Nacional destacan los valores y las expresiones vertidas y plasmadas en decisiones como las que somos testigos hoy, y lo seremos en los próximos días en el marco de la Semana Ecuatoriana. Gratitud por el espacio para llenarnos de patria, para trascender nuestras raíces, y reconocemos el alma andina de pueblos de larga historia. Señora Presidenta, señores concejales, para la comunidad que representan con tanto acierto y justicia nuestra amistad, gratitud y compromiso, el Cabildo de Los Ángeles, a través de esta declaratoria, confirma los cordiales y tradicionales lazos de amistad entre nuestros pueblos.
Mrs. President, distinguished representative of the Gray City of Los Angeles, Honorable Gal Ordóñez, representative of the National Congress of Ecuador and family, representatives of the Ecuador 2000. The consulate of Ecuador, in behalf of the Ecuadorian government and the Ecuadorian community residing in Los Angeles, have the honor to salute all of you and extend heartfelt sentiments of gratitude for proclaiming the Ecuadorian Week. We would like to maintain and enhance the excellent relation existing between Ecuador and the Gray City of Los Angeles, and invite all of you to celebrate with us the Ecuadorian Independent Days agoteng. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Victor Rayejo with the City Planning Department, and also part of the committee that's forming this Ecuadorian Week on behalf of them, and especially in behalf of Dr. Ordóñez, who comes from the National Congress of Ecuador to make the presentation to the council and the mayor. I'll just give a summary of his speech, and I will transmit on to the council and to the mayor the complete translation of his text, of his speech. Okay, so he says, in salutation to the council mayor and the people of Los Angeles, "It is with enormous delight to be here in the great city of Los Angeles, one of the largest, most innovative, and diverse cities of the world. As the designated representative congressman of the National Congress and people of the Republic of Ecuador, it is my honor to impart to you a most affectionate greeting to all the people of Los Angeles, and in particular, the Ecuadorian community. We are most grateful for the support given by the mayor, city council, and people of Los Angeles to proclaim this week Ecuadorian Week in honor of the Independence Day of Ecuador commemorating that date of August 10, 1809. My admiration is given to this great city because of its people who know how to strive for a better livelihood, a tremendous capacity for innovation and diversity which have given it a place of huge respect, recognition, and leadership in the United States, California, and the world. With the inauguration of this special week comes a new era of friendship and cooperation between Ecuador and Los Angeles, one that is special for encouraging new avenues of endeavors, which also includes the protection of civil liberties and promoting the economic well-being of the Ecuadorian community in Ecuador, in Los Angeles, who are now part of the fabric here and are people who contributed to the economic life of Los Angeles. We are cordially grateful for the places in Los Angeles allowed for us to celebrate our country that transcends our roots and recognizes our Andean soul of a people with a long history. We hope to share this with all the people of Los Angeles, and that this will continue the friendship ties between our peoples." Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before I make the presentation, I just wanted to make sure that everybody hears the same thing. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de participar, 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 lo siento, participar en esta celebración de su cultura. Hay muchos ecuatorianos aquí en Los Ángeles, y creo que muchos de ellos van a venir al centro de la ciudad para celebrar este día importante en la historia de su país. Gracias por todo. And with that, I would like to make the presentation of one of two certificates, and we will do the second one in the back, to the committee that congratulates them for putting together the Celebration of Ecuadorian Culture.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Let me recognize at this time Mr. Garcetti, who would also like to add his words.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Councilwoman Perry. Gracias, Consejal Perry, por sus palabras, y gracias, colegas estimadas, y los residentes ecuatorianos de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. It was my pleasure last year to join with Ecuadorian community at the annual parade that you have. Mi distrito tiene muchos ecuatorianos. My district has many Ecuadorians that live there, and the friendship, la amistad entre los dos países, the friendship that we have between both of our countries is very strong, and I just wanted to thank you for being here today. Congratulations, felicidades, y bienvenidos.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Ms. Perry. At this time, I'd like to recognize, Ms. Perry, are you completed?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize the individuals here.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Ecuadorian 2000, we're going to present the people that make this Ecuadorian Week. I will call first the President Carlos Payares. Please, Carlos. Mr. Fred Bolanos. Fred, por favor. Eddie Salazar. Mercedes Phillips. Estela Ríos. Marcelo Izquierdo. Héctor Real. Bolívar Enriquez. Y Silvana Paredes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one more presentation.
All right. Would you mind if Mr. Zain introduces a class at this? I'm just going to have Mr. Zain introduce a class. Mr. Zain?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have an introduction of Columbus Middle School in the back. If you'll please stand, Columbus Middle School. We want to acknowledge you, your teachers, Ms. Beza, Ms. Manassian, seventh and eighth grade students from Columbus Middle School in Canoga Park, and they're here on a field trip, a unique program called Emergency Immigrant Education Program, part of the ESL program. They're on a field trip today here visiting City Hall, and the theme is California. So we welcome you to City Hall. Enjoy your day from the Los Angeles City Council. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, Ms. Perry, for your second presentation.
Thank you very much. This is a very quick one. Douglas Forrest, President of the Los Angeles Bike Messenger Association, is joining me here today. He's got a big crew here to support him. I brought him here today to commemorate the events that will be taking place this month in anticipation of the Cycle Messengers World Championships this year taking place in Seattle. As part of their events titled "City on Lockdown," our City of Los Angeles Bike Messengers will tour the landscape, exploring treasures like downtown, South Los Angeles, Echo Park, Hollywood, and other great parts of our city. They will ride in diverse terrains and celebrate our city's cultural diversity in the process. I asked them to come today to celebrate and to encourage all of you to join in the festivities. And now I would like to present Douglas Forrest, who can give us more insight on the details of this upcoming celebration.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the city for having us here today. The people that stand behind me only represent a very small handful of the 125 bike messengers that are in the city of Los Angeles. On a daily basis, we serve the city with commerce. We provide businesses to the, we provide our services to the attorneys in Los Angeles. Sorry, I didn't write a speech. But we risk our lives every day for you guys. We hope you appreciate it, and as we can see today, you do. Thank you very much. We hope this will begin the relationship between the city and the bike messengers, kind of a misunderstood subculture, but we hope eventually you'll come to understand it. And like I said, take a look at our website, which is under ulockmob.com, and you will be able to get all the information on our upcoming events scheduled from August 22 to the 24th. There'll be a lot of fun events, a lot of serious events, a lot of competition and camaraderie. We hope you all can make it. If you guys want to, it'd be good to see you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. I will recognize next Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thanks to those bike messengers. It's great to see them in here as well. Madam President, members of the public and colleagues, it is my great honor today to honor one of the greatest leaders in education here in the city of Los Angeles, Dr. Mary Spangler, the president of Los Angeles City College. It's a bittersweet day because we not only get to honor her and thank her for her incredible service over the last five and a half, six years as president of Los Angeles City College, but also to say goodbye for now. Not farewell forever, but just goodbye for now as she heads off to a new job as the chancellor in Michigan of the Oakland Community College District there. Mary Spangler has a career of over 37 years in higher education. Leave 25 years as an English teacher at Los Angeles Valley College in CD2, I believe. Currently is a resident. I got to introduce her to Councilmember Weiss of Encino, but somebody who is just at the helm of Los Angeles City College, placed Los Angeles City College even more on the map than it was before, building on the great and rich history of that institution, which we have a couple graduates of here, Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange, other folks who have gone through that great campus and who have gone on to be leaders in this city. Under her leadership, Dr. Spangler has increased the endowment of Los Angeles City College by more than tenfold, impressive accomplishment for any president of any institution of higher learning. She has launched a number of community partnerships with businesses and residence groups, and really transformed the curriculum on the campus. She has been a visionary in terms of looking at the long haul, making sure that LACC was not only good in the present, but planning for the future. And now, as we see the state fiscal crisis, it was very prescient that Dr. Spangler was able to put in not only a strategic plan, but also a master plan for the campus, and she was part of the leadership that helped the two bonds pass recently for the Community College District, which will see Los Angeles City College into the 21st century to become one of the most modern, most well-equipped, best-trained campuses in the country. She's also launched partnerships with high schools throughout the region, helped embolden middle school programs like laser after-school programs, to really create what we were talking about just before, is that seamless pipeline as people enter elementary school, middle school, high school, go straight into community college, and go on to more education or to the workforce. She also has helped with workforce issues, bringing a workforce center to Los Angeles Community College, making sure that training is there, pioneering, bringing back important programs like a nursing program at Los Angeles City College, which, when you look at LACC, is just down the street from Vermont and Sunset, one of the greatest hospital corridors in the country. in the country, and linking very closely the community to healthcare, linking very closely the residents to healthcare jobs which pay a living wage and which help everybody go up that career ladder. She's been honored many, many places. She's contributed within the profession, serving on boards and executive committees of educational institutions and associations. She was honored as a Woman of the Year for her great accomplishments by the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce recently as well. And I know for myself, it has been such a rare pleasure to serve alongside you, Mary. Whenever we've been able to sit down, you cut to the heart of the matter, you go after what's important, you're well organized, your challenging staff always knows exactly what to ask for, and you've really set the bar as a very high one. And I know that LACC will go from strength to strength, but we will lose one of its strongest voices, strongest advocates, and strongest visionaries. But we want you to know that when things get too humid in those summers in Michigan, when they get too cold in the winter, that Los Angeles will be waiting for you to come back. Before we hear from Dr. Spangler, I want to welcome Mark Drummond, who's the Chancellor of the Community College System here, to maybe say a few words about Dr. Spangler, and then we'll hand it over to Mary to say a few things as well.
And we also have Mr. Labange.
All right. So why don't we hear from Mr. Labange first?
Madam President, Mr. Garcetti, Mary, thank you for what you've done for Los Angeles City College and also what you've done for the Hollywood community. Prior to your arrival, really, it wasn't seen as a Hollywood campus, but your involvement with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, your recently deserved award that the Chamber gave you as a woman of distinction truly is worth recognition. And I'm always proud of the education I got at Community College at 855 North Vermont Avenue and all the good, and I will continue to fight City College for the good of it. Congratulations. Fight for City College on the good of it, not fight with. I'll just fight that. I'll just, I'll just fight that little fence on Melrose. But I just want to say, congratulations for all the students that you've helped. No place turns people on more. If you want to get turned on in this world, you go to a community college, and it will turn you on to a higher level, and it certainly did for me and many others. Congratulations this year and the other years as the state champions of basketball, which the student athletes come from, and your coach Miller does a wonderful job. But also, just congratulations to you, to this next step, to Michigan, and I know you'll think of us when it's cold, because it's never cold in California, in Southern California. Thank you. Congratulations, Mary Spangler.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would just also like to tell Mary thank you for so many things on the campus and the honor you gave me a couple of years ago to speak at one of your graduations. And as I've told people for many years, it's, Community College is what starts a lot of people on the educational path. Unfortunately, I was there 10 years before I realized it was a two-year college, but and you never gave me the idea or the solution of how do I get all those units out of breakaway, because I spent a lot of time there. But it's a great university, and also we recently honored the basketball team, and there's been so many great people there, from Coach Pritko when I was there, and Mr. Boyer, and many people that I've stayed in touch with that have had an impact on so many young people's lives, and you've just carried that tradition. When you told me that you were leaving, what's the first thing I asked you? I said, "Do you know it snows back there?" And you said, "Yeah, but it's a great opportunity." And I said, "Yes, but it snows back there." And so I'm sure you will be back to visit, and I hope you stay in touch with us while you're gone. But again, you've been a part of the LA city family, and we hope you realize that, and we'll always know that you have a place here.
Councilmembers, thank you for your kind comments. I'm Mark Drummond, the Chancellor of the District. You know, the Los Angeles City College bears the name of our district, and it bears the name of our city, and so it's very important to all of us, and indeed, we view it as our flagship institution. Some of you have indicated that when the Bruins and Trojans can't get it done, LACC does. I would remind you that over the last 10 years, Los Angeles City College has won the division championship in basketball nine times and won the state championship twice. So they are a force, and their students graduate and their students transfer to fine universities. Anyway, Dr. Spangler's been indispensable to the district, and I believe the city of Los Angeles and certainly Hollywood. She certainly did, was a prime leader in the effort to pass Proposition A and AA, and her list of accomplishments goes on and on. So I think the city will miss her, Hollywood will certainly miss her, and we will all miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spangler.
It's my turn now. I will, I will be brief, but I do want to thank the City Council for this honor. I especially want to thank Eric for thinking of doing this for me as I leave. I appreciate the remarks from Tom Labange and Bernie Parks. I have worked with them closely and several other members on the council. It was not an easy decision for me to make to essentially retire as the President of the college after spending my entire professional career in the LA district, 38 years' worth of time being a professional educator in the classroom. And I was kind of calculating this morning how many students I might actually have touched during those 38 years, and I think it comes roughly to about 150,000 students. Thinking that I might have made some difference in their lives is really a humbling thing to think about. I've never really quite thought about it that way. I've always approached my responsibilities as what is it that I can do to make things better? How can I make a difference? And standing here this morning and hearing these wonderful things said about me is wonderful. One of the things, two little points, I will say that retiring is really actually kind of good. You get to hear all sorts of wonderful things while you're still alive. Something to think about. The other thing is, I realize that the folks in California are only here because of the weather. Trust me, if it was cold here, you'd be gone. So I am, I am going to Michigan knowing that it's cold, knowing that it's humid. I've learned about mitten envy. Those of you who may know anything about Michigan know that the state is the shape of a mitten. That was my first lesson. So I will not forget Los Angeles. How can I possibly do that? And I do expect to return for visits, and who knows what the future might hold. I'm open to new opportunities and challenges. That's what I think this leave-taking is about. So thank you for the honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Spangler. Congratulations.
Allow me to just do the formal part of this, and don't worry about us retiring. We've got term limits here. Let me present this resolution on behalf of the entire City Council. We'll make one correction on it since it says you were appointed President in 1977, and I think it's '97, so we'll make sure that's corrected. But thank you from all of us here in the city of Los Angeles, and know that, as you just mentioned before, you really have made a difference in this city. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. For our next presentation, I will be recognizing Councilmember Padilla.
Colleagues, I know it's a busy morning, and we have numerous special and worthy individuals that we're presenting to this morning, but I will actually ask to join me if they're available and not working on motions, Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Cardenas, and Councilmember Gruel, if she's around. Saw her a little while ago. If you're available, please join me at the podium for this very, very special presentation to Harry Coleman. If you live in the valley, if you're involved in the valley, there's no way that you don't know Harry Coleman. And we just had a wonderful community event yesterday evening honoring the North Hills Coordinating Council, but more importantly and more specifically, paying special tribute to Harry Coleman, who has served as its president for the last 12 years since he became very, very intimately involved with the North Hills community and the Coordinating Council specifically. For those of you familiar with the North Hills community, you know it's a community that has historically struggled in recent history with issues of crime, with issues of violence, with issues of drug dealing and gang activity and prostitution. Soon after the 1994 earthquake, it's an area that suffered from lack of investment and lack of attention. It was becoming a ghost town. But there was Harry Coleman and the North Hills Coordinating Council addressing all these issues of crime and violence, addressing the issues of abandoned buildings and what was being done to restore and rehab and reinvigorate that community. They got into issues of housing and affordable housing, balancing tenants' rights and property owners' rights, but seeking to improve the overall quality of life. And as I mentioned last night in this community tribute to Harry, you know, a lot is being said right now about neighborhood empowerment, neighborhood councils, neighborhood organizing throughout the city of Los Angeles. We need to look no further than what's happened in North Hills and the tremendous revolution in the North Hills community that's been brought upon by the North Hills Coordinating Council with the leadership of Harry Coleman and Bobby Fiedler for a wonderful, wonderful example of what is possible, what can happen when the community gets together and works together in partnership with the city as well as the state and federal government and their representatives. And just a little bit of background on Harry, and I want to turn it over to some of my colleagues to add a few words, but before I present this resolution, just want to add that Harry's originally from New York. Originally from New York. So he's part of the Los Angeles population that wasn't lucky enough to be born here but was smart enough to move here. He, I didn't know this about you, Harry. We talked about your trip last, and I'll mention that in a second, but you were a tennis pro. Tennis pro at one point with a record of 127 victories and one loss. That's a pretty good record, and I think that mirrors your record there in the North Hills community as well. He made his home in Northridge upon moving to Southern California, was a worldwide traveler and fisherman, but the amusing story that was shared last night is he once planned and executed a worldwide trip that landed him in the Guinness Book of World Records. A trip that spanned 140,000 miles, 113 countries, covered 20 months, and in the process, he met four heads of state, something that Harry just did because he felt like doing it and wanted to do it, but he did it in style, and not only was it a significant moment in his life, it landed him in the Guinness Book of World Records. Clearly, a man of energy, clearly a man of vision, clearly a man of persistence and dedication, and someone who achieves their goals. The North Hills community and the city of Los Angeles are much better off for the contributions of Harry Coleman, and in a minute, I'll present this resolution to him on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and in our appreciation. But let me recognize-
Yes, Mr. Padilla, I was going to say, while you've been standing there, the crowd has been growing, and the crowd's been growing by a number of your colleagues who want to stand with you. So let me recognize Councilmember-
Councilmember Smith, Cardenas, Zine.
And Ms. Gruel.
I just wanted to add my few words about Harry. He has been such an extraordinary leader in the San Fernando Valley, and obviously, I want to acknowledge Bobby as well behind me. But Harry's one of those, particularly on the veterans issue, and I remember that Sunday where we were out there at the Veterans Hospital, and he's a doer and someone who, what he believes in, he's willing to fight for and take on, and I am so happy that I've gotten to know you, and you've enlightened me, encouraged me, educated me about some of those important things in the San Fernando Valley and the city as a whole, and count you as a friend, and want to congratulate you today on this honor and look forward to many of those other issues that we can stand beside you to help you make better lives for our veterans and other things that happen in the San Fernando Valley. So congratulations. Thank you.
Well, I'm very happy to join my colleagues in, salute to Harry Coleman. Having known Harry for about 15 years now and, or 20 years maybe, a long time, Harry's one of those people that is not confrontational, but whenever there's a problem, he's involved in finding the solutions, whether it's a small problem on one little street or a very big problem with the VA hospital or big problems with substandard housing in the community. Harry was involved as a leader in a community that really wanted a spokesman to step forward. Harry was the guy that stepped forward. In a community that really needed people to coalesce around the fight, whatever it may be, Harry is the guy that brought people together, brought them to the table, and brought them into the fight, and engaged them and brought them leadership. And joined with Bobby Fiedler over those years, they made a great contribution to the community and a great team. And I'm very happy to be here to recognize constituents of mine who happen to just do a lot of work in Mr. Padilla's district. They've been great leaders in both of our districts, and I'm just honored to be here as a very good, longtime friend of Harry's and Bobby's both, and congratulate him on all the work he's done, and thank him on behalf of all the citizens of the San Fernando Valley for just being a great leader. Thank you, Harry and Bobby.
Thanks, great. Well, there's Clint Eastwood, known as Dirty Harry, and there's Harry Coleman, who cleaned up the area. And he and Bobby were tremendous, and I know how that coalition started and the wonderful work you did, and nothing stopped you, and you made the changes that were necessary to be made in that community. I have visited the residents, and I have seen your world travels. While it wasn't done on a Harley-Davidson, you're a man of adventure. I know you've traveled the globe, and wonderful successes and wonderful accomplishments in your life. And I'm happy to stand here with my colleagues, the San Fernando Valley representation of the City Council, along with our other colleagues in the city of Los Angeles, to acknowledge what you have done to turn around a community, and you and Bobby have been a tremendous team. Dirty Harry, Clint Eastwood didn't have Bobby helping him. You had Bobby helping you, so it was double dynamic. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to Bobby, because together you folks have been a wonderful addition to the valley, and you've really made the positive changes that we're now seeing today. God bless you, Harry, and best wishes to you and Bobby. Thank you.
I just want to share with you, my first introduction to Harry before I actually got to meet you, Harry, was, God, this guy's a pain. He complains about everything. What I found in working with Harry Coleman is that he's a doer. He wants to get things done, whether it's cleaning up a street in the northeast San Fernando Valley or weighing in on the issues of secession, the bigger picture issues that we all contemplate and deal with and wrangle with. And I just wanted to be here today to make sure that I give my compliments to you, Harry, for being such a positive force out there in the San Fernando Valley and for always looking at the real picture, which is what's going to improve the lives of valley residents, whether it, once again, whether it's a street of people or it's the entire San Fernando Valley. And also, you can never talk about Harry without talking about Bobby. Thank you very much, Bobby, for your compliments to all of the good things that you've done in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. I see the crowd has swelled by one more.
Yes, as a valley representative, I want to hug Harry Coleman and let everybody know this is what we want to look like after we do good work, got a beautiful tan. That's because he's cleaned the streets of the San Fernando Valley. Harry, I love you for all the years that you've done great things for your community, and Bobby too, together, and I'm so happy for the both of you in your own partnership, but in the neighborhood leadership that you've shown. If everybody did us their part, they can make a difference, and Harry Coleman has done his part. Here, here.
Harry, on behalf of all of my colleagues in the city of Los Angeles, please accept this resolution in appreciation of all that you've done, and we know you're not going away. It's just a see you later, but thank you so very, very much.
Harry?
Actually, I haven't been the President of the North Hills Coordinating Council. Tony Swan has. So I want you to hear a few words that he has to say about last night's activity and about the Coordinating Council. Tony?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure and privilege to be here. We couldn't have succeeded in North Hills without the leadership of Harry. If there was a goal to be made, he set the standard high. He didn't care who he picked up the phone to speak to. He was very adamant in his requests, and generally, we achieved all our goals. And if we look at coordinating councils or city councils today, it's bringing everybody together to talk to one another, and he was a leader in this, and we will really miss him, but thank you very much for honoring him today. He is my father, really.
Thanks, Tony. Bobby?
I just want to thank the City Council for this recognition in behalf of Harry. He has worked very, very hard over the years, a very unique character, has a very interesting background, is extremely determined. Obviously, you would not have had the accomplishments that he did, but nobody does this kind of thing alone. If it weren't for the support of the council and other bodies of elective office, they would not have been able to achieve the things that they did, and we were all very, very grateful for the assistance you've given in the past, and I look forward to working with you in the future and asking for more assistance for this North Hill Community Council. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, members of the council. Thank you very much. I'm going to be very brief. I know you've got a lot on your schedule this morning, but I just wanted to point out to the council the importance of the issues that are coming up on community councils. You're going to have to make some hard decisions on which way the city's going to go on these issues, and realize the importance. If nothing else, look to North Hills and see what can be done when the community joins together with the City Council, the mayor, all the other offices that deliver services, the police department, and so forth, to specific- other offices that deliver services, the police department and so forth, to specifically get things done. We've done that over in North Hills. I'm going to tell you a short story, and then I'm through. I recently moved to Imperial Beach, California, which is down about four miles from the Mexican border. It's a great, as soon as I saw it, I knew I was at home right away. This community in the '70s or the '60s or even into the '80s, you wouldn't want to live there. None of us would. It was terrible. It was gang-ridden, just like North Hills, plenty of drugs, plenty of gangs, illegal activity out the gizou, and all kinds of motorcycles. No disrespect, Dennis, ever. But we have just as many motorcycles down there now, but they all behave. Anyways, they went about it on almost identical basis that we did, and this was some 20 years ago. We just celebrated our 46th anniversary as a city, and they got that place cleaned up with their sheriff's department. I know we can do it here in this city if we all just stay together, if the council works with all the other bodies, this'll work. Thank you very much, too, for the recognition.
Thank you, Harry. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Padilla. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Tom Labange for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, and let's give Harry Coleman another great hand for all that he's done. With me right now is Scott Mason right here and Boyd Britton. They're tremendous contributors to the betterment of Los Angeles through the listing orders of K-Rock, and this morning, I would like to salute Boyd and Scott for all that they have done. Boyd is Doc at the Rock Britton, arrived in Los Angeles some 29 years ago from Boston, where he worked in radio at some of America's top markets, including Boston and San Francisco, Seattle and San Diego. He has been the news director and drive time anchor for the morning K-Rock. He has a great voice, which is so fun when we bring people like Boyd down here, because you get on television and people see that beautiful voice and the person who's behind it. He's been a talk show radio host, word performer, and worked very much throughout the years in the radio industry. He was a Golden Mike Award winner among many other things, and he attended both Emerson College and Princeton University. I brought him down here today at the suggestion of Isaac Burks. Isaac, come up here. Isaac is one of our city firefighters who's very involved with the House of Blues Foundation and other cultural outreach programs, and he's a nice listener to K-Rock, and he said, "Councilman, could you do something for Doc?" And I said, "Yes, he's coming to council, he's going to be recognized, and we brought you down here today for this nice proclamation." But joining him this morning is Scott Mason, and Scott Mason would certainly be a contributor to wherever he worked, because he has such ingenuity as an individual in making things happen. He's a part of Infinity Broadcasting. He has worked at K-Rock, at KROQ Public Affairs since 1979. He is a dedicated host of these public affairs program, which some of us have participated in, bringing up current issues that concern the public on a Sunday morning program. His open lines bring strong focus and discussion on politics and the importance of community involvement for our youth. He has the ability to bring listeners of K-Rock to engagement in issues that involve Los Angeles and Southern California. He also is a constituent of mine, which I'm very pleased at, because he gives me information that I need from the community, especially on traffic. I shouldn't say this, but if I was governor, I'd put him in charge of traffic, because he knows so much about this state, because he's traveled this state. No, 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 I'm not doing, I'm not doing anything. But he knows so much about the state and the state transit system, the highways that are involved. He's an advocate for community involvement throughout our communities, responsible for the budget of seven radio stations here in Los Angeles, some 50 radio stations from Phoenix to Seattle, and this is so important that we honor Scott for all his work, especially with his work in the EMT program for the LA County since 1990, has been very involved in prepared this program. He truly is a truly wonderful person, but I want to ask that we adopt these two resolutions for these two great people, Scott Mason and Boyd Britton, two great communicators on the radio who make a difference to the listeners, who engage them, not only in the entertainment and the drive time, there's a K-Rock listener, but also in the entertainment and information that is so important to have. Let me salute first Scott Mason right now.
Mr. Labange, we also have Mr. Zine who wanted to-
Well, Mr. Zine is taking a picture in back.
Right, I'm sorry. Then go ahead.
I think. So we're going to call on Mr. Zine in a moment, but let's give a big hand for Scott Mason. Okay, Scott? Thank you so much. And also, let's give Boyd Britton, known as Doc on the Rock, okay?
All right, and Mr. Zine has now joined us.
Thank you, Madam President, and Tom Labange, thank you for bringing K-Rock, KROQ, world famous, to the city of Los Angeles, to the city council. I've been on Scott's show many times, and Scott and I have known each other for many, many years. Doc, I know what you have done, I know your listeners, I know what good that station does for the region, and I just want to acknowledge the 6:00 AM shows that Scott does Sunday mornings, and some of us have been guests on his show. Those are live shows broadcast on KROQ. You've done a tremendous support. I know you're involved in safety, emergency services, Scott. I know what your contribution has done. Doc, what you have done for the community, the listeners of the city of Los Angeles. So my acknowledgement, my congratulations, I only hope that you keep up the good work, keep moving forward. KROQ, world famous. Thank you. Congratulations to you both.
Let me recognize-
Thank you very much. Let's have-
Mr. Labange, we also have Mr. Weiss who would like to-
Mr. Jack Weiss. I didn't know, Jack, listen to K-Rock. All right, Jack, we learned something.
There's a lot you don't know about me, Tom. I know this guy, and he's a great guy, and I've been on his show, and it's great to see you here, and I had a wonderful morning with you. It was very interesting, and one of the things that was really great for me was to hear your perspective on all the issues we're dealing with in LA. I mean, we covered a lot in that hour or two. We covered crime, we covered traffic, we covered quality of life, and that service in particular, it's unique in LA, the service you provide with that broadcast, and I appreciate it very much, and I look forward to hopefully having the chance to go on with you again someday. So I just want to add my voice to those who are congratulating you today. Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
And Mr. Labange, Mr. Labange, I don't know which one of us can say truthfully that we listened to Ralph's showbiz report this morning. I know I did. I don't know where you were at 7:15.
I was out meeting the people in the fourth district, not listening to radio. I apologize, but I would have. Okay, let me have Scott Mason come up and say a few words. Scott?
Thank you very much. I couldn't do what I do on K-Rock, and also, by the way, re-air's on Arrow 93. I want to make sure we get that station in there too, without you. I mean, the show is about basically having people who are community leaders on. My goal is to get more people out there to vote and to understand what they're voting for and who they're voting for, and what are the issues of the community. I mean, it's a partnership between the people who serve our community and the people who are out there being served. So thank you for getting up at 6:00, actually 7:00. You know, it seems like 6:00, Dennis, to you. You've been up all night most of the time anyway when you come on, but I thank all of you who've been on the show. Many of you have, and I do appreciate it. We look forward to having more of you on. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and also recognize Scott's great friend and partner, Judge Marlene Kristovich.
My much, much better half.
Much, much better half. Judge, give her a big hand. Also, she went to Mothergood Council Grade School, where my brothers went. Give her a big hand, Judge. All right, and John Marshall. Now, Boyd Britton, let's hear Doc on the Rock. This is the voice you want to hear.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the council. First of all, my recognition for Scott Mason, the hardest working person in show business, took over from James Brown. The first time I was in these chambers was almost 30 years ago, and giants roamed the earth with names like Gibson, Lindsay, Ferraro, Bernardi, and a kindly guy from KFWB named Charles Serge, who paid me what was until today the supreme compliment. I like to listen to Boyd because he treats everything as if it were BS. The truth is so hard to come by, and so few people remember their history that skepticism and scholarship are essential for any news anchor, and also essential is to love your subject. And despite our problems, that's easy, because my subject is LA. People who actually hear the Kevin and Bean Show on K-Rock often ask how I endure the abuse that is their stock in trade, and the answer is simple. The dreams of the entire world are dreamt right here in Los Angeles, and when the dreamers wake up, they hear me. I thank you all and God most sincerely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange, and I believe we have one more presentation. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Zine, can I ask you to join me for this presentation?
Me?
Yeah. We'll find him, don't worry.
I was looking for the judge.
Yeah, you're usually looking to run away. Colleagues, we were here not too long ago honoring someone who had given more than 30 years of their life and career to the Los Angeles Police Department upon their retirement, and we welcome them as a colleague to the Los Angeles City Council. This is another little surprise we have for Councilmember, now Councilmember Dennis Zine, who has just achieved 35 years of service to the city of Los Angeles, although he is still with the police department in the capacity of a reserve officer. So far. Something that we're reading a little bit too much about these days. Nonetheless, we wanted to take a moment to thank our colleague, Councilmember Zine, because it's not just service to the city, it really is a love of the city, whether it's as a police officer, as a council member, a reserve officer, a volunteer, or just a resident who's a big booster of the city. 35 years to the city of Los Angeles. Dennis, I don't know how the city can begin to pay you back. Before I shake your hand and give you a hug and a kiss, we do have a special presentation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I would like to welcome you to the 35 and over club with this lovely pin. We have three stones. We think they may be diamonds, but we're not sure.
Beautiful.
Congratulations, and I understand that this is also another anniversary of your 21st birthday, and Councilmember Garcetti would-
Son?
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. I had been composing a special song for you in my home, but Mr. Zine burst in in uniform, wrestled me to the ground with Mr. Smith while Mitchell Englander took pictures of me, so I'll just have to lead everybody in a normal round of happy birthday if everybody wants to join me for the 56th birthday of Mr. Dennis Zine. Happy birthday, Dennis. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday from the Frisky Kitty. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. It's been two years of excitement. It's been, as they say, a love fest. It's always a pleasure when you can work with people and get things done for people and work with people you like, people you respect, and for the good of the people of Los Angeles. I'm a native of this city. I love my son Christopher, who's a police officer with the city of Los Angeles, lived over two years. My son Eric, who is a senior at Berkeley. I mean, God has been good to me, very blessed, and I'm honored to serve with my colleagues around this horseshoe every single Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Monday in public safety, and it's really a pleasure, and it's, the only sad thing is it goes by so quick. 56 years have gone by like a rocket ship. 56 years, still riding that Harley, still chasing bad guys, but thank God, it gives me the health and the endurance to keep it up, and I enjoy that. So it's a pleasure being with all of you, and I hope this will continue for many, many more years. My friends at the Protective League, my friends around the horseshoe, it's a real pleasure, it's a real honor, and I appreciate you acknowledging me today and giving me three diamonds. I mean, this is really neat, three diamonds in this pin. I want to keep these as a very precious time. I remember when I got my 10-year pin, my 15, 20, 25, 30, now 35 years. And my wonderful staff, I got to acknowledge my staff. Thank you, staff. You're great, all of you. Candles over there, I brought the candles, a beautiful birthday cake. God, thank you all very much. God bless you all.
Mr. Garcetti?
And you too, Eric. We would have bought you 56 candles, but we couldn't afford it after that closed session settlement the other day.
Yeah, I know about that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, oh, Mr. Labange.
Congratulations, and Maggie Whalen. Yesterday, Alex and Cindy and Eric, the leadership of the council coordinated a briefing for all the new members of the city council staff, and it was nice to see, because Cindy was there, Greg was there, and myself in the beginning, where we started in the career. And here you are, Dennis, all your years of service, 35 years. You never know, I'm sure, when you came up to the police academy 35 years ago, that you would be standing right here today between the Director of Personnel for the city of Los Angeles and the President of City Council to be honored. You're truly to be commended, a graduate of Notre Dame High School and Sherman Oaks, and a tremendous guy that's only going to get better, and thank you, Dennis, for all what you do in your years of service to Los Angeles.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Happy birthday, Mr. Zine. Mr. Clerk, let's call the roll.
Cardinals, Garcetti, Gruehl, Han, Labange, Sladlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 15 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, we have the quorum. Let's go through the agenda. If I could have attention, please? We're going to go through the agenda, members, so if there's items you want to call special.
Approval of the minutes.
Moves, Mr. Park seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
They are approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Madam President, there has been a request by Council District 10 to continue item 8 to August 15.
Without objection, item 8 will be continued.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing. Council should deny the protest and confirm the various assessments.
Items 1 through 7?
1 through 7.
1 through 7 are now before us, ordinances and hearing protests. I see no cards, so we will open the hearing and close the hearing. These items are now before us. Any specials, member? If not, the ordinances are before us, the matters are before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those matters are approved.
Items 9 through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 13, there are two reports on file, both of which are note and file recommendations.
All right, members, items 9 through 15?
9 through 13, Madam President.
9 through 13 are before us. Are there any items special? If not, on item 13-
Cal-
I'm sorry, yes.
Item number 12, please.
Item number 12 is called special by Ms. Gruehl. And I believe item 13, we can move the Public Works Committee report. So those items are now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next item?
Items 14 through 34 are items for which public hearings have not been held. On item 20, a public hearing was held in the Budget and Finance Committee, and that committee report concurs with the recommendations of the ITDS Chair, and the report has been distributed to all members.
All right, items 14 through 34 are before us.
Just like to call 23 and 24 special.
Items 23 and 24 are called special.
And I'd also like to have 24 taken out of order.
All right. Let me first indicate that there are no cards, so we will open and close the public hearing on these items. Any other specials, members?
21 and 22.
21 and 22. All right, members, the remaining items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Mr. Cardinals, let me recognize Mr. Cardinals at this time. He had an announcement. Mr. Cardinals?
Yeah, just since we're on the announcements of birthdays, I just want to say happy birthday to my chief of staff, Jose Coronejo. I think he was here a few minutes ago. Happy birthday, Jose.
All right. All right. He's hiding in the back. Happy birthday. Mr. Clerk?
On the continuation agenda, Madam President, item 35 is an item noticed for public hearing. The city clerk has submitted a revised ordinance and engineer's report reflecting the new boundary changes.
Mr., are there any councilmembers, there are no cards submitted on item number 35?
Yes.
So Mr. Villarogosa would like to call special?
I'd like to call item 35 special.
Mr. Villarogosa calls 35 special. Next item?
Back to the items called special. Item 12 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Perry, you asked that we take item, was it 24, out of order?
Thank you very much.
Item 24 will then be before us. I recognize Ms. Perry.
I introduced a motion on this situation to respond to constituent concerns about both of the projects indicated herein. They are the site of the new high school on the former Santi Dairy site and the Mercado La Paloma, and they have both been impacted similarly with construction of the new sewer project, ESIS, and construction by LAUSD of new schools. At 36th Street and Grand Avenue, next to the Mercado, the main concern with the ESIS project, cutting off business and deterring customers. And in the 2,000 block of Maple Avenue is primarily troubled with LAUSD construction. And I thought that it would be best to put these in the motion together. In the future, I'd like to see LAUSD and ESIS put in place a package, guidelines, a protocol that would address community concerns upfront rather than after the fact. I know there are many examples in the city where we have done this. Since I worked in the city for such a while, I recall the mitigation program for Hollywood Boulevard when they went through cut and cover. Three specific items I would encourage both entities to focus on are environmental hazards, public safety, and transportation issues. I would hope that these projects can become an example of how mitigation can be done, done well, and not devastating to small businesses or community-based businesses that are independently owned and operated. These are key items I think both of these projects could easily address in order to reduce the adverse impact that construction has on the community. Some of the measures that would help would be prohibition of construction at night to reduce noise, a requirement to monitor dust throughout the construction period, provisions for parking for residents and customers of small businesses and employees and owners in areas adjacent to the construction, proper signage so consumers know that businesses are continuing to operate during construction. It would also be significant to have long-term benefits from construction. For example, a commitment could be made to the community to help with public improvements like repairing sidewalks, planting trees, improving street lighting. One other comment would be to purchase one of the vacant lots where the construction is staging its activities and then donating it back to the city once the project is completed for a pocket park. And I think you said there are no cards on this item? Okay, great. All right, so if there are representatives here from LAUSD or ESIS, and if you could just identify yourself, I'm asking them to come back to us in 45 days with something in writing as to a protocol that I hope that we can establish because the construction for schools is significant throughout the entire city. And as we move eastward, the confluence of school construction with ESIS is sure to come up again and again. So if you could identify yourself and...
Glenn Gritzer, Special Assistant to the Superintendent with LAUSD. I'm here with Rohmet Kessi, who's a senior project manager on this project. And we are certainly happy to work with Public Works and come up with the plan that the council member is suggesting for mitigation of the impact on these businesses. It has been something, as you know, that has been an issue that has been happening for a while. We have been attempting to work with the businesses here to mitigate some of these impacts already. Most sewer projects, this is a project where we do have a joint agreement with the city of Los Angeles to move this sewer line. These projects normally take about 18 months. We've compacted that construction time down to six months. The street will actually be reopened within 10 days. But in terms of a plan for how to mitigate these, we have to be responsive on a case-by-case basis, but we also are learning as we go here because it's the first time that we've built schools in a long, long time. And so working with the Public Works Department to figure out the best way to have mitigations in place as we go that are going to impact businesses is something that we're happy to work with them on, and we'll come back in that period of time with a plan that looks at those things.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Let me recognize Mr. Smith. Mr. Councilmember Smith?
Greg? Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support Ms. Perry on this. I had a situation in my district with a high school being built there where LAUSD just really didn't want to participate in the problems that were being created there. I think we need a bigger policy. This is just one instance where we need to do something, take action. But I think we need, as a council, to develop a policy. They're going to be building 80 to 100 schools in our city this year. That's a major impact on all of our streets, transportation elements, everything throughout the city. And we need a better working relationship, and I don't think we have that yet. And there's also a lot of cost that the city is bearing because of the schools being built that we need to look at. So we need to look at a bigger policy. This is just the first step. Ms. Perry, just take care of one individual problem. We need to look at all of them. So I support her in this one instance and ask the council, we need to bring back a motion and look at the impacts of these 80 schools in all of our districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have Ms. Perry's substitute motion for a report back to deal with some of the mitigations that were suggested. That has been distributed. Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to rise to support my colleague, but I also wanted to share with the council that there has been an effort by the city, the school district, to work together on joint effort and joint projects. I think what's important here is that the volume of work is such that the caseload gets pretty heavy. And it's important that we do develop this policy so that we can absorb that volume of work. The issue of how we work our sewer systems, how we do our street improvements, plus the construction schedules, how we can leverage these kinds of projects so that we're not tearing out streets, rebuilding them, and doing the kinds of impositions that hurt our commercial corridors is very important. So I rise to support my colleague. At the same time, I want to acknowledge the fact the school district has tried in their various ways to reach a point. We can have that coordination, but the volume is tremendous, and perhaps having this policy will help us deal with that volume of work.
Thank you. Let me recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Good morning, Glenn. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions to bring light to the public who might be listening. Has the relationship between, how many schools have we, excuse me, has the school district broken ground on in the last couple of years?
We have 47 projects under construction, and then we've broken ground on many more than that.
Okay. And all told, over the last couple of years versus the next few years, how many schools will we break ground on here in Los Angeles, roughly?
We'll be under construction by about 134 projects, not all of which are new schools, but about 134 projects by the end of the year.
And prior to this phase, how many schools have we built, say, in the city of Los Angeles concurrent with LAUSD?
We've finished six schools in the last couple of years, but before the last couple of years, it's been very, very few.
Like two, three schools in the last 30 years prior to this phase?
Yeah, I mean, very, very few.
So my point is this, now that we're in this different relationship of having to count on each other, being the city and the school district, how are we doing now?
Well, I think that we are trying to work with the city in a variety of ways. As you know, the mayor's office has spearheaded an extensive mapping program on the part of a variety of city departments, so we know who's doing what as we plan schools. In this particular case, we had to move a sewer, which is more dramatic than we normally have to do, but we have a joint agreement with the city on this particular project, even though it's had its impacts. It is actually in itself an instance of trying to cooperate with the city. So I think we're getting better, and we're much farther than we've ever been, but we're still learning.
So what I'm getting at, today, the motion by Jan Perry today is basically something that's an example of how we are working together. We are moving mountains, so to speak, to make sure that these schools get built.
We believe so.
Okay. With that, I'd just like to say thank you very much for this motion, Jan. I think this is a perfect example for all of us to pay attention to the fact that when this school district taps on our shoulder and says, hey, we may have some obstacle here, we may have something we need to move on, we need to cooperate, we need to work together, and we need to make sure we include the community and everyone involved because everybody wants the best thing for our children. It's not the easiest thing to do, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Labond?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gritzer and Ms. Perry, I support this going to committee. And I also want to suggest, too, that as Mr. Reyes spoke of, members and Mr. Smith, there is a working group. Jane Blumenfeld is a senior assistant city planner, if I have that title correct, works diligently with the school district. The only suggestion I would have, because there is such a big issue, I attended a briefing over at board headquarters on Vodrie Street about all the 80, the next phase on top of what existing is, that maybe there would be some formal need to discuss all this issue of schools because it is the largest building program going on in Southern California, larger than any other thing that is happening, as our public schools are being upgraded finally after years. The first high school, what was that, Mr. Garcetti? First high school since Eric Garcetti was born is under construction in Los Angeles.
It's actually this high school, and will hopefully be open in September of next year.
Yeah, so, okay, so we want to do that. But anyway, I rise to support Ms. Perry. I rise to acknowledge Mr. Reyes, though, in the ever-going discussion that we have about schools and that things are taking place right now, and so we better make sure that the public knows about it because that's when you get the problem, when they don't know. And I only suggest, and this is not even an amendment, and Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, sometime in the future, we have it here so people could see it on 35, so people can learn about it. Because often the school constituency that the district is talking to is different than the neighborhood constituency that lives there or the business constituency. So it's extremely important that you tie that loop on these issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labond. Members, we have had three cards submitted on this item while the discussion has occurred, and it is a required public hearing. So let me open the public hearing at this point and ask California childcare providers for action to step forward, LA Acorn, and say yes to Children Network, who submitted cards.
So we work with thousands of, my name is John Jackson, and I am here representing California childcare providers for action. It's a network of family childcare providers throughout Los Angeles County. And a lot of those childcare provider agencies are in contact with us there in office and immediately surrounding the area that the school is supposed to be built in. And we just want to make sure that there is some checks and balances in place, that if there's a way to be entered into a dialogue around whether or not it's going to impede people's ability to carry out their work in these communities across Los Angeles, in particularly in the ninth district. So we support the motion by Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Thank you. Any of the other people who submitted cards want to speak? If not, then I think we have before us the motion that, the substitute motion that Ms. Perry submitted, which will have a report back from Los Angeles Unified School District and the Board of Public Works on construction mitigation ideas. That matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That matter is approved, and we will send it forthwith. Next item?
Item 12 called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Mr. Weiss?
There's a special motion that should be circulated to the desk. I don't know if it's been marked special one or not, but I do know, it's been marked special one. I do know that we have a council member that needs to leave soon, and because it is an important matter, I would ask if we could take special one out of order.
All right. If there are no objections, we have Mr. Weiss's special one before us. We need, Mr. Weiss, would you like the vote on taking that up at this time?
I'd like to vote on taking it up at this time. This is a matter relating to the burglar alarm issue. It's a very...
Let me suggest you make the findings, or itemize the findings as why there's a need to, the need to act arose, and we're acting on it today.
It, under the city charter, the city council has five days, five council days following an action of a city commission to consider that action, to evaluate it, to do a full analysis, and then to assert jurisdiction over it. That is Section 245 of the new charter. A number of members of the council served on that charter commission. And so it is under Section 245 that this motion is brought by five members who have endeavored over that period of time to do the research, to do the due diligence necessary to investigate all the very complex issues involved in this issue, which is a complex issue. In the meantime, for example, new facts have come to light. The Los Angeles Times recently began an investigation concerning the deployment of detective resources throughout the city relating to homicides. Those facts came to light, in fact, after day two of the five-day period, again necessitating further consultation and discussions amongst members to decide whether it was appropriate to bring this action. A vote for the findings is not a vote to assert jurisdiction or not to assert jurisdiction. It is a vote to simply allow five colleagues who've brought an important matter before the council that is a matter of citywide significance to have that debate and discussion in the council.
Ms. Han on the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, with all due respect, I am perplexed why this item qualifies under Council Rule 23. As you know, when we invoke Rule 23 for the new members, what we are doing is basically suspending our council rules, and we are violating the Brown Act. And under Rule 23, as I know, there's only three reasons. One, that the need for such action arose after the posting of this agenda, that the item was continued from a previous meeting, or that the majority of us determines that an emergency exists. This item, I do not believe, qualifies for suspending our council rules, violating the Brown Act, and most importantly, excluding the public from this debate. And I know that Councilman Weiss did not intend to exclude the public, but in fact, that's what we do today if we hear it today. The police commission acted on this matter on July 22, a full 10 days ago. While this gives us authority to act in five council days, what emergency exists today? What new information exists today that did not exist before the posting of this agenda? Councilman Rice and the others could have brought this in, you know, last Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We could have agendized this for the council meeting today. We would have given the task force an opportunity, neighborhood councils an opportunity, members of the CPABs an opportunity to tell us how they feel about this issue. I don't believe the fact that we learned that detectives are not deployed in a particular area where high crime exists constitutes information that we did not know before that applies to officers responding to burglar alarms. Colleagues, we have had a full debate on this issue. We have had a citizens' task force that included the police department, that included the alarm companies, that included neighborhood council represented, that included public from all across this city, that spent 60 hours at their own time coming up with recommendations that I don't have to remind you, that this council unanimously supported and asked the police commission, except for the new members, asked the police commission to adopt our recommendations in their final alarm policy. Members, the police commission, on a four-to-one vote, did what we asked them to do, which was create an alarm response policy that reflected the recommendations of this citizens' task force. For us to now insert ourselves in the debate at this final hour sends a mixed message to the public, to our neighborhood councils, to the citizens' task force, and to the police commission, who we know acted on our request to approve the recommendations. I think this is not worthy of violating the Brown Act. This is not worthy of suspending our council rules. And most importantly, the public is not here today to tell us how they feel. And as you know, we should wait, we should only use this in dire emergencies to exclude the public from weighing in on decisions that we make here at city council. The public has spoken. Neighborhood councils have spoken. The citizens' task force has spoken. We have a policy in place today that is a combination of everyone's recommendations, including this city council. I'm going to vote no on the findings, Jack. I don't think this is worthy of violating the Brown Act.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, colleagues. When we talk about the public, Councilmember Han, I wonder whose public we're talking about. And I say that with due respect. For me, this is an emergency. When I see that, and for me, the detective issue is a critical one because it's the first indicator of an in-depth study going back 12 years in how we're allocating our resources to our area. When I read statistics that we have unsolved killings of 5,500 murders, when I read that 10 square miles and Watts area had more homicide... in 10 square miles and Watts area had more homicides this year than 200 square miles of the San Fernando Valley, I wonder if our citizens understood what that means to our communities. When I look at the issue of the alarms, the people who cannot afford alarms, who are not even being responded to because they don't have alarms, are the very same people who don't have the protection, who don't have the detectives that are dealing with this issue of murders. So for me, that is a very relevant point to the whole issue of deployment. For me, it is an emergency situation. When I look at the kids that are being killed and are not being protected, when those communities are being held hostage by these murderers who are walking around in their neighborhood because they don't have the police personnel there, that is a very critical issue.
Mr. Reyes? If I can just ask for a quick pause and I'll hold your time. Just want to remind the entire council about the difference on speaking to the motion itself versus speaking to the findings. And right now, we're speaking to the findings.
I'm speaking to the findings because it's been asserted that this is not an emergency situation. I dare and essentially all respectfully differ with that opinion because I think it's an emergency situation to all those families and all those kids right now at this moment who can't leave their apartments, who can't walk down the street because they know there's a murderer on that block or in that neighborhood and there is no one there to protect them and we don't have the personnel to deal with it. That is a very real reality. That is an emergency in my mind because these are the folks that are not being attended to and these are the folks who essentially don't have a voice because they're the ones that don't have the luxury or the time to go to these committee meetings to attend these public sessions and they are also part of the public. I like to find out who attended these meetings, who was making these decisions for my public, and did they have access to these meetings? Do we provide childcare? Do we provide transportation? Were they able to take the time off their two or three jobs just to pay for their rent and food? Let's talk about which public we're representing and which ones don't have a voice.
Our next speaker is Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the findings, I do also share that this is not a violation of the Brown Act. It is a right that we have to assert jurisdiction. We have, as we know, under Prop 245, five days. It wasn't until, I believe, Tuesday that the article came out about detectives. And I dare say it was rather shocking news to all of us. We talk all the time about numbers and about statistics, but I think that particular article, and it was just at our last council meeting when we offered, again, a special Rule 23 for an award for someone who had been murdered, a young man who had been murdered in, living in the Ninth District, and Mr. Cardenas read and adjourned in his memory. Today, we read more about that particular story and I dare say, more than statistics, when we read one story, when we understand the issue of deployment, it is a, an urgent situation that becomes more real, that has come to our attention, that has and can, I think, persuade us to at least look at this issue, assert this jurisdiction on this last day to act. If we don't, we lose it. I think, in fact, it's just precisely the appropriate within Rule 23, under the need to act today, that were we not to act and at least discuss the matter. There may be difference of opinions as to how we will act on the matter, but to allow the council to deal with the serious nature of police deployment and police deployment as it relates to this issue and as it relates to that new information that just came forward, it's a greater global issue, but it's about what our police officers and what we ask our police officers to do in every community in this city in using their resources to the best of their ability to maximize that resource to prevent and fight serious crime. So I believe the need to act is here and I ask that we do have 10 votes to assert jurisdiction.
Mr. Weiss.
And, and, and just to reemphasize, the proposal in the motion is not to take an action one way or another vis-à-vis the public's interests on this issue. It is to assert jurisdiction over the issue, to send it to committee where Ms. Misakowski will conduct a public hearing, to send it to the Public Safety Committee and to send it to another committee as well if, if, if that is the request of the council. I had a conversation, a lengthy conversation about this issue the other day with Mr. Deaton, who is not able to be with us today, but I'd like to ask Ms. So, who was pressed for that, to tell us the CLA's view of, again, we're not talking about pro or con on the underlying issue of burglar alarms, but just about making findings to hold a debate on day five of five under Section 245. Ms. So.
Yes, Councilman. With regard to the issue of it being the last day, Mr. Deaton and I did have a conversation with Mr. Weiss. Our feeling is, is that the council is the determining body of whether an emergency exists. And in the sense that 10 votes are required if the council makes determination that an emergency does exist in this situation and if 10 votes are approved, to approve this jurisdiction, we believe that that would meet the requirement of asserting jurisdiction and that it is, that it would meet the requirements of the Brown Act in determining that it is an emergency situation.
And just to clarify, you and Mr. Deaton, I believe, are of the view that it is not an improper use of this council's prerogatives under the law. It is not a violation of the Brown Act if 10 members indeed decide to make the findings under Rule 23 to have the debate.
If 10 members make the finding to find it is an emergency, we would say that it needs to be-
And if you, if you thought, if you thought that this motion was poorly taken in terms of, you shouldn't even bring this here under Rule 23, you and Mr. Deaton, I'm sure would have told me that the other day.
There, yes, we would have.
May I ask, I'd like to have the city attorney respond on whether or not we can make the findings. With all due respect, I don't think-
I am not an attorney, thank you.
The LA is not an attorney and does not advise this council on whether or not we can violate the Brown Act.
Okay, Ms. Hahn and Ms. Misakowski, I'm going to ask everybody to take a deep breath here. Discussion on this isn't over. Ms. Hahn, you are on the queue to speak again and I would ask that you ask the city attorney to respond under, under your time. Before we get there, not next on the queue, you're on the queue but you're not next. I have next, Mr. Ludlow, followed by Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks, Mr. Zine, Mr. Villarigosa, Mr. Garcetti, then Ms. Hahn for a second time and Ms. Misakowski for a second time. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yet I've sat in this chamber for two hours this morning and I've listened to us recognizing, obviously, people who we honor and respect throughout Los Angeles. But to tell me that there's not an emergency, when information that came out in the LA Times this week that indicates 5,500 cases of murder are going unresolved is offensive and repulsive. Many of you were at my swearing any van when you heard me dedicate my campaign to an eight-year-old boy named Ishmael who was shot in the head and killed watching cartoons on his living room floor. His case is still unresolved. If you want to talk about an emergency, talk to his family, talk to his, his relatives. This is a moment when this council's got to step up and recognize priorities. This information came out this week and it is compelling enough to give this council time to debate the merits of that issue. If there's anything we should have spent two hours on this morning, it's talking about whether or not this issue rises to the level of changing a policy that's directing the chief of this city, the chief of this LAPD, to redeploy officers and his staff to resolve the cases of murder. And I am offended that we would say that we could spend the last two hours in this chamber recognizing people, but for the men and women whose children and their cousins and their grandparents who are losing their children on a daily basis, they don't deserve even a moment in this chamber today to discuss the merits of this action. We just heard that it has merit to be brought. It is not the, the first time that this council has waited till the last day to exercise Prop 245. It is not the first time and it won't be the last time, colleagues. One day, it's going to be your opportunity to bring it up and I'm going to be in support of this and I encourage every colleague who read that article to not only vote with their conscience, but vote with the morality of the city. We ought to be looking at that issue. We ought to send it to this floor to debate it and that point, with all due respect, would be the time to talk about the merits of the case. But we ought to bring this to the floor right now and there are people out here dying and they're living in neighborhoods with killers who have not been identified. We don't know if they're organized crime. We don't know if they're acting as serial killers. We don't know that and we can't get to the bottom of that until we begin to deploy the resources in a way that makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. You know, we can talk about this new information that came about detectives. Mr. Ludlow, I really appreciate what you're saying. We all have this problem with crime in the city. That's not what we're talking about here. I'm a burglar arms. You can take every detective I have in Denver Division and put it in your division. You can take every detective in the Valley Bureau and put it wherever you want. The response time in this city will not change one second. Not one second. This is about burglar alarms. It's not about detectives. It's not about the chief's deployment policy. If you want to open that up, I'll second your motion because I want to open it up too. I have some real concerns about deployment policy. This is not deployment policy we're talking about. We're talking about findings, whether we can violate the state Brown Act to determine whether or not the burglar alarm policy of the police department is valid or not. Burglar alarm policy, not detective deployment. Nothing has come to this council in the last week that changes what we're talking about here. In fact, I heard early in the week that Mr. Weiss was going to bring this motion in. He's had the opportunity. It is here at the last minute. Why? He had the opportunity, could have brought it in. I heard rumors all week about this. It's not here. We wait to the last minute so we can violate the Brown Act so people are not given their right to be heard? That is wrong. That is immoral, sir. Let's open the department's deployment policy under a separate motion. I will second it. This is about burglar alarms. It is wrong to block the people out of that process by ruling 23 today.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my judgment, I think we're using an article in the Times, which we all know is a paper that's well documented in their accuracy, to make some policy decisions, which I think are clearly more important in the sense of trying to separate what the reality is. The reality is that the mixing of apples and oranges of detective formula, homicide clearance, the rate of response, patrol appointment is a error in all of our judgments and then also to look at the motion and say, to mislead the public to say that 15% of officers' time is used in burglar alarms is a misnomer because what we've known for historically is 15% of the call load, not 15% of their time. And so I think we have to separate the issues. And anyone in this council and in the city that only became aware that certain parts of the city have more homicides than others just because they read a Times article must have been under a rock somewhere because that has been a subject of discussion for at least 40 years that I'm aware of, that certain parts of the city, historically, 77 at one time Rampart, has always had more homicides in the entire valley. But we also realize that you have to deploy based on a larger need of a community and you must have a basic level of deployment to open a station. And so therefore, that's why there's basic cars and that's why there's detective assignments. Just to open a station, you must have about $7 to $8 million worth of personnel. So when we convolute all these issues, I think we mislead each other and mislead the public. But the real issue here is that as we've studied burglar alarms in '92, '97, '98, and again now, if you took all the burglar alarm calls out of deployment formula, you would not move one officer from one division to the other. When people say that you're going to change deployment by not accepting this motion, the department has not changed their deployment from the beginning. We did not assert jurisdiction. The policy stayed in place. The community studied it. The department recently said they will change, just going to two strikes into the three. The issue, in my judgment, is that we should allow them to do what they said they're going to do and then if we're concerned about the technology part, we should send that to ITGS to ramrod that portion of it to make sure those technology issues are resolved. But to convolute all these issues into one motion as though homicides are going to cease because we're responding to alarms, I think misleads all of us and the public. And I would say that the emergency is not there to deal with it in this fashion. We've known about this since about February when they first made the policy decision change. And so, again, the, the process that we've gone through today appears to be using a lot of information that doesn't support the true issue of what is responding to burglar alarms.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Last year, the city of Los Angeles was the murder capital of America. This is nothing new. I've heard Ed Reyes and the concerns he has for the victims in his community. I hear Martin Ludlow, the concerns for the people in your community. And I know this is not a problem that is an emergency now. It's been an emergency that hasn't been addressed. The issue of public safety in Los Angeles is broader than alarms. The issue of deployment, where are we putting our officers? Where do we take the 200 officers out of the transit operations? Where do we put them? Do we put them in detectives? Do we put them in patrol? Why is the response time in my community, the West Valley, is up to 12 minutes? 12 minutes to get a police unit on an emergency call? When you talk about the issue of emergency, we've known about this. The statistics show we're last year the murder capital of the country. We have rape cases that aren't being investigated. We have homicide cases that aren't being investigated. We have a consent decree and we have a whole bunch of folks working consent decree. We have internal affairs. We have a whole bunch of folks working internal affairs. The problem is the priorities. We haven't prioritized. And the police department and the police commission and the chief of police have a responsibility to prioritize. They used to have South Bureau homicide. They had South Bureau homicide, a group of homicide detectives that handled homicides in South Bureau, very efficient, very effective. Homicides were reduced to South Bureau. They then sent them out to the divisions. This alarm situation, which we want to have for those folks that subscribe, a safety mechanism, we need to look at the broad picture. The emergency that we want to talk about today, emergency's been known for a long time. And my heart goes out to the victims. My heart goes out to the families. But this isn't anything that we just found out about, folks. We looked at the statistics. Crime is reducing in Los Angeles right now. Clearly, we need more detectives handling crimes. Maybe fewer, maybe fewer working consent decree and more handling crimes because every time an arrest is made, you need a detective to follow up. We don't have enough black and whites that respond to 9/11 calls. We don't have enough detectives. And when a citizen in the city of Los Angeles has a traffic collision and they call the police, unless someone's dead or injured, we're not going to come help you. We're not going to come help you. And when someone has an alarm, well, maybe we'll get there, maybe we won't. And when someone needs the police, we don't have enough units to respond. Basic cars? We're supposed to have 10 basic cars in my area, the West Fernando Valley. We're lucky if we run seven or eight basic cars. But the police department deployment of black and whites, of detectives, is up to the police administration. But to use this situation to say it's an emergency, I'd say, emergency is people getting killed, people being victimized, people being robbed, cars getting stolen, people's homes getting broken into. That's an emergency we need to address with deployment. But I look at all the folks that came out of that transit operation that has now been shown. Did those folks go into detectives? Did those folks go handle those rape cases, those DNA cases that we try to have the backlog filled? They're not there. So it's a matter of deployment. Black and whites respond to calls, detectives follow up on the arrests. It's clear, it's easy, it's simple. The more people, the more deployment. But start counting how many people we have in non-detective assignments. That's the problem. That's a deployment issue, not an alarm issue. And I will support my colleague, Janice Hahn, who says this is not an emergency. The whole crisis of crime is an emergency, but not this alarm issue. And just real quick to close, this has been gone through debate after debate after debate. We had the Citizens Commission establish, how long do we drag this on before we finally say, let's do it, let's finish it and let's not micromanage it anymore?
Mr. Villarigosa.
Mr. President, members, as to the findings, the gravamen of the argument against this motion is the idea that somehow there is a Brown Act violation. Let's be clear on what we're trying to do here. We're trying to take this action and address this situation in a way that allows an opportunity for those of us, there are four of us who are new members of the council, who have not had the opportunity that some of you have to debate this issue. It gives us the opportunity to send this to committee. And so contrary to the idea that there's a Brown Act violation, in fact, what this does is give us an opportunity to have a discussion in the committee, give us an opportunity does is give us an opportunity to have a discussion in the committee, give us an opportunity to notice this issue, give us an opportunity to have the public, not just the 6% of the people that have alarms in this city, but the people who live in the South Bureau area, in the central area, who can come to talk about the lack of resources that we have with respect to murder investigations in that part of the city. The second issue is the issue of exigent circumstances or emergency situations. You know, Mr. Ludlow, I think, said it about as well as you could. And he was passionate today. And he was passionate today because Mr. Ludlow represents a part of the city where people are getting killed, as Mr. Zine said, and we've all known about those murders in central area, in the east area. But what we didn't know before Tuesday, that for 12 years, there's been a documented history and pattern of failing to investigate those murders. Yes, everybody knew that people were getting killed disproportionately in south and east Los Angeles. But what we didn't know is that we didn't have the resources to address that crime rate and that crime spike. What we're saying today, members, is give us the courtesy, the courtesy especially to the four of us, who have not had the opportunity that the rest of you have had, to discuss this issue. Give us the opportunity to put new life, the new evidence, the new exigent circumstances that we talk about, that give a more amplified discussion to this matter. I believe that this does go straight to the heart of deployment. And the idea that it doesn't just doesn't pass the smell test. Just last week, or a few weeks ago, this council, before some of us were here, debated about whether or not we should put 320 new officers on the streets of Los Angeles. If that's not an issue of deployment, what is, everyone? We have officers today, and we're not deploying them correctly and efficiently and effectively, because we're sending them to alarm calls in a way that I think is a waste of our resources. Member, I ask you for the courtesy to allow us to have this discussion, send this to committee, let's put the sunshine on this issue, an amplified discussion. I urge your support.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a good debate to be had. We've debated this quite a bit. I think there are three things that we're looking at here. First of all, we're looking at the merits of the policy. All the people that have been here before, who have heard me speak before, thought that the original policy was the one that was the most meritorious. My own neighborhood council, where I live, Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council, passed a resolution in support of absolute non-response. The neighborhood council that said that. And I do respectfully disagree, though I understand it's more difficult for some people to come to City Hall than others, that they can't be here. We've deployed people from the most needy neighborhoods, around housing, around living wage, around issue after issue after issue. People know how to come here, they know how to organize themselves, and it's incumbent upon us to organize them when we want them to be here. The second part of this argument is about process. I don't think process ever makes us obligated to do anything. But we do, as all small d Democrats, I believe, have an obligation to make sure that we have a functioning and a strong democracy here. Is this the best way for the process to go forward? The third issue is a fiscal issue. Sometimes Rule 23 stuff, there's some flexibility about. But I don't know of a lot of groups that are sitting there, very well-funded, watching very closely, with possible abilities to be litigious, who in those past circumstances have looked as closely at the council's action as they might today. I'd like you to hold the balance of my time, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city attorney a couple of questions. A city attorney whose office has not taken any official position on this, and I'm truly asking for neutral advice on this, but I would very much like to ask the city attorney about their opinion on Rule 23, if one of them could come forward to the table. If you can hold the balance of my time. Would you from there? Okay. The question is, and then if you'll hold the balance of my time, will you please give us your interpretation of whether this meets the thresholds for qualifying under Rule 23 of this council?
Okay. I'd like to make five points, if we could hold the balance of his time for that long.
We're holding his time.
Thank you. First of all, this spirited debate on findings is refreshing. Every Rule 23 should have this type of debate, because it is involving the Brown Act. Secondly, on the exit, above the exit of Chambers, there's an inscription that says, "Law is reason without passion." Third, the Attorney General has stated that the purpose of the agenda description is to inform interested members of the public about the subject matter under consideration so that they can determine whether to monitor or participate in the meeting. Fourth, I respectfully disagree with the chief legislative analyst's interpretation of the Brown Act. The CLA knows funding issues and all types of the nooks and crannies of City Hall way better than I ever will, but I respectfully disagree on this issue regarding an emergency meeting. Fourth, I'm sorry, fifth, it is our opinion that insufficient facts have been provided to support the necessary findings pursuant to both Rule 23 and California Government Code, Section 549, 54.2b, 2.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Colleagues who want to change this policy, I agree with you about the policy. You've heard me vote that way, you've heard me say that in private conversations I have. But I do think that process is important, and that we have a fiscal responsibility not to be here in two months in closed session, under a lawsuit, asking why we did what we did. If there is a way to change this policy, and we know as legislators, we can change this policy in many different ways, let us find that way. It would be very easy for me just to go along and say, because that's what I believe on the policy merits, that's what my own community believed in and testified to, that we could go ahead and do that. But I, in good conscience, could have just voted that way, but I can't do that to my colleagues. I respect 100% where you're coming from, especially the new colleagues who are not here, who I think make the most compelling argument. But for those of us who have been here and have been part of that process, I think it is incumbent upon us to make sure that if we're going to change something, we at least, and I don't mind doing it, because I've done it in every community meeting to people who disagree with me, at least let me do it to their face. At least let me tell them to their face that I disagree with you and that I'm changing the policy, and that we give the notice to do that. It is not going to be the end of the world, and all of us around this horse should care about crime. I just lost another young person in my community last night at about 6:30, another tragic loss of life in Elysian Valley. Every single day, there are people that are dying in this city. But let us also be clear that it is not the folks who are necessarily going to be going after the murderers who are going to be taken away from that. It's going to be the proactive crime fighting that this policy gets to the heart of. Let's not go over the top. But it is critical we have those officers out there doing that. This is the wrong way to do it. And if I can't look my colleagues in the face and let them know why, in my conscience, I can't today on process, as a small d Democrat do that, then my vote is not worth anything.
Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I call for the question.
Okay, members, previous question has been called. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Roll is open. Please close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Okay. That ends discussion. Colleagues, we have before us a vote on the findings, not the motion, on the findings of whether or not to consider special one today. A yes vote, a yes vote would be to make the findings and consider the subject matter, and no vote is a vote to not make findings, and the issue will not be before us today. Any questions? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll, tabulate the votes.
8 ayes, 6 noes.
Okay. That does not meet the 10-vote requirement to make the findings. Findings are not made. Next item, please.
Item 12 is called special by Councilmember Grohl.
Mr. Grohl, item number 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an amendment, a 12A amendment to this item, which is relative to a waiver to allocate up to 25% of the CDBG dollars for public services. As we talked about just now, about the importance of dealing with issues in our communities and low-income communities, the flexibility we have in having a 25% cap versus 15% cap in the city of Los Angeles has afforded us the opportunity during the last 10 years to be able to address issues such as we've discussed today, the importance of having social service programs that deal with some of the issues of crime and gangs, et cetera. What we are asking here today is to send a resolution that supports legislation that would be before the federal government, that asks us to keep that 25% cap and allows our legislative body to have our legislative analysts on the federal level lobby for us, and to approach some of our congressional representatives to have the 25% cap continue. So I ask that we have this amendment put into the record, that's been signed by several of my colleagues, and that we move forward to adopt this today. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I'll pass it.
Other members wishing to be heard, item number 12. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 21, called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item 21.
Yes, members of the committee, this is insulting from money that was going to be transferred into the federal fund that was not previously in our budget base. I like items 21 and 22, you just go to finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other members wishing to be heard on this item. Seeing none, let's proceed. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, we recognize Councilmember Villarosa.
Mr. President, members, item number 35, I'd like to call it out of order. The 12 members for this item.
This is an ordinance, first reading. 12 votes would be required for approval on the first reading, and before additional members need to leave, let's take this item out of order without objection. Item 35 is called special, members wishing to be heard on this. If there's no questions, if there's no discussion on item 35, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item 23, called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, item 23. Let's proceed to the next item while we wait Ms. Perry to return.
That would leave a public comment, Mr. President.
Okay, we do have one common card, a public comment today. Ms. Carlin Moore.
Hi, Carlin Moore, can you hear me? I was here a year ago when Chief Parks, at the time of the chief, voted out about the same issue today, Mr. Zine. I agree with everything he said. I represent victims of crime for 12 years here in the city. I'm not, this is the same thing happened last time, it's like no one's listening to me.
Paying attention, ma'am. This is your time.
Thank you. Okay, my son was shot in 91. It took me 12 years to find the witness. As a result, there's a 14-month-old baby that was murdered. I've been representing victims every day of my life. I have taken gunshot victims into 77th PD. I've had to have detectives come down because they could not walk up the stairs to interview them. I've had, I submitted 37 uninvestigated cases to Mitzi Grazo, Bob Baker of the Police Protective League, a year ago. Nothing has been done. What they did was, they used me against Chief Parks, okay, as to go against him to have it removed. That's just the bottom line. Because Mr. Baker told me that he would help me with the right avenue to find out why these cases weren't investigated. That never happened, okay? He doesn't return my calls or anything. As a result, what he did was, he gave me two donations to my company, which is One Stop. Mitzi Grazo, she promised me a grant from Eagle &amp; Badge. I'm asking for an investigation into the Eagle &amp; Badge Foundation. And what does that have to do with the Police Protective League? And I want certain answers. I'm being, right now, the state Victims of Crime Program, they have removal of representations for me right now because of a conspiracy between 77th Police, Rocky Delga Deal's office, Victims Division. How can someone remove me from representing people that I help? I don't, I'm not paid by anyone. And I don't like that at all. And I think that I can't continue to come here. I have all of these victim cases right here that were never investigated, and I don't think it's fair at all.
Thank you very much.
President, let me ask a question. Port of information to the president.
This is the time, I want to make sure she's concluded and has a chance.
I understand, but I want to ask you, is there anyone there to help a citizen who comes and bring forth issues and ask for representation? That's what I would like to know. That's what I would like to know. You're telling me my time is up again, where you know what, I don't think it's fair. I think someone should take a look at these cases, because they're 77th PD, and new, okay? For 12 years, I have been trying to get, Captain Mayweather was in a meeting with myself and the Attorney General and the Victims of Crime. March 2001, the State Building, he said that he was going to help find out. Well, hell, nothing has happened, okay? I got 33 detectives, commanders, lieutenants, sergeants, and I can document them and submit them to you that I have gone to. I was in a meeting in 77th, where I was served with complaints that came from Rocky Delga Deal's girl from the state. How did they know I was in the meeting? I'm filing a conspiracy and entrapment charge, just so I want the city to know, against those three agencies. And I have paper trail eyewitnesses and everything else.
Thank you, ma'am. If I can ask you to conclude, we'll try to get some in the court.
I will conclude, but I'd like someone to answer who's going to help me with all these cases.
Our next speaker is Gondi Gomares.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers. When you took your seats on July 1st, I came before you and stated that I was excited about the coming four years, because I saw that we had experience, we had talent, and I believe now we had desire. Today, I saw passion on item, special item 1. To see the passion from our council people on both sides was unbelievable, and I thank you, and I think the city of Los Angeles is going to be better for this because of that passion. Thank you.
And our final public comment card is from, this being withdrawn. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Still on the desk is item 23.
Okay, if we give us a minute here, we may have a resolution on item 23. Can we do housekeeping?
Council has motions for posting her in for all.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Pedy requests to leave early on Tuesday, August 5th, for city business, meets policy.
Okay, excuse granted. Any other housekeeping?
That clears the desk.
Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, I'd like to move item 35, send it forthwith.
It has been sent forthwith.
Thank you.
We still have item 23 on the desk. This is a public safety matter that has come by way of public works. Let me try to help here, which is unusual from the chair. This matters before us, Ms. Mstikowski, Mr. Miller, can you assume your locations, please?
I would, on behalf of Ms. Perry, I'd like to ask the CLA to explain this issue as it relates to Metro Jail.
The item before you is to award the design contract for the jail. As you all know, there's been significant controversy and discussion about the location. And we just want to make it clear that the award of this contract does not mean that there has been any site selected. It'll take at least three or four months to do preliminary work that's irrelevant to any site selection, so the recommendation, so they don't lose more time, is to go ahead and award the contract. We'll be back to you for the final recommendations on the location of the jail.
Members of the Little Tokyo community, please be advised.
So what you're saying is these two matters, the matter of funding for the jail and the site is, or the site location are bifurcated and not, the second part is not a part of this motion.
That's correct. All that's going to do is get the contractor working on generic design issues on the jail, regardless of site.
And the great health member of the fourth district, Mr. Labange.
President? Ms. Mstikowski, last question. Has there been a discussion on Parker Center is going to be replaced? And this is to go possibly on First Street, East Calamita. Has there been any discussion that if Parker Center is replaced, it's being rebuilt at 150 North Los Angeles Street?
We're in those discussions now, as well as whether the jail and Parker Center have to be the same facility, can the two be split? The entire issue of all of those public safety facilities are under discussion.
The entire issue of those, all of those public safety facilities are under discussion now.
But conceivably, with the condition of building, we're going to temporarily relocate sometime in the future, but the potential to rebuild the police administration building on 150 Los Angeles Street is a reality that could be looked at, correct? We haven't selected a site for the new headquarters?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We have authorized exploration through the municipal facilities committee of both the purchase of the site at 1st and Alameda, as well as some discussion and design there for some elements of a complex that could be an overall emergency network, Los Angeles emergency network with fire dispatch center, new emergency dispatch center, that has been, is also being looked at as an alternative for the police and administrative headquarters with or without a jail, and there has been no decision made at all about 150 North Los Angeles Street as to include or withhold there once that building would likely come down.
Right, all right. Well, members, I will support this, but I also want to say it may make a great decision that whatever we do in the future goes back at 150 North Los Angeles Street as opposed to being placed outside the core civic center. If that building is in the condition that it is in, and I've seen the building, it needs to be replaced, I just want to leave over the question. We may replace it wherever it is, which may include the existing jail. What's the condition of the jail? The jail there is not as old as Parker Center, is it?
It was built at the same time, and the jail does need to be replaced. There are requirements.
I want to ask former general manager of the police department, if he could help me with a little information. First of all, it was when the original box was put together, we considered the issue of the jail and the major changes that have the jail separate from Parker Center, which then you have the new Parker Center not being a 4-hour building, which cuts down the wear tear. The dilemma of trying to build it on this site is that you cannot stop operating the jail while you're building the building. And you can't build on that without tearing down Parker Center as it exists. So the dilemma is trying to, as they're looking at another property, to move the personnel of the police to allow the jail to keep running, build another Parker Center. And move the personnel back, move people into the new jail, and then decide what to do with Parker Center. The property, because you can't separate those buildings and its functions and build around it. And one of the major mistakes in the design was putting a jail in the administration building. They should never have moved it. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all the information. Other members wishing to be heard on the side?
Seeing none, appreciate the clarification from the CLA. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
The desk is clear.
Colleagues, at the end of our agenda, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? If there's no announcements, do you have any adjournment motions?
What announcement?
Mr. Ludlow, follow the remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, obviously fitting the discussion we had this morning, just wanted to invite people out, not only in my district, but colleagues tomorrow morning. The Department of Public Works is going to be joining me at 6:30 tomorrow morning to get a massive cleanup of the Ballard Village community, which many of you know is plagued by a tremendous amount of gang violence, a lot of violence, a lot of graffiti. Tomorrow morning, we're going to have a lot of city workers out there getting to clean up bulky items, clean up graffiti, and so I'd just like to encourage the public to be out. We're going to dispatch at Fire Station Number 94 at 8:00 a.m., corner of Coliseum and Hornet King Boulevard. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two announcements. Thursday, August 2nd, at 9 o'clock at Exposition Park Community Center, there will be a community development corporation. We put in a financial empowerment conference for 8th district residents, and the, again, it starts on 9 o'clock on the 2nd. Also, on Sunday, August 3rd, the Lamarc Park Village Merchants Association are having open houses for all businesses in which they'll have entertainment and light refreshments to encourage the public to come in and socialize with business owners. That starts at noon on Saturday, until 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. So there are announcements? The beautiful council member from the 15th district?
Thank you, Mr. President. My announcement is if you have nothing else to do this weekend, you're all invited to come down to the beautiful Point Furman Park, right overlooking the Pacific Ocean. On a clear day, we can see Catalina, the newly renovated lighthouse that's there for the sea, but we have every year put out by the Chamber of Commerce, the Taste in San Pedro. And for two days, Saturday and Sunday, we'll have over 25 restaurants that will be offering tastes of what they do best, and there will be activities for kids, there will be music, and it's just a beautiful thing to do, come down and see what we have to offer in San Pedro. So come on down to the Taste in San Pedro on a gorgeous summer day overlooking the Pacific Ocean. That's right, and it's always 23 degrees colder than the valley.
Other announcements? There's no other announcements? Please rise for adjournment motions. If I can ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Adjournment tributes? Mr. Labaix.
Members, I asked you, remember Sam Phillips, who was a legendary man in the music industry who launched the career of many great rock and roll by opening his doors at Sun Records, where Elvis Presley parked his truck and getting $52 a week, recorded a song, "That's All Right, Mama," that launched Elvis's career at Sun Records, and also Jerry Lee Lewis, Johnny Cash, Roy Orbison. He loved, he's from the South, he loved the beautiful music, the black music, that was so much separated from the community. One of the greatest things about rock and roll is it did integrate America, and starting with the efforts of Sam Phillips and Sun Records, bringing entertainers together, he truly is the one who, Robert Hilburn, the great critic from the Los Angeles Times, that started the revolution of rock and roll. 80 years old, he died in St. Francis Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee. I just ask we adjourn on this day in memory of Sam Phillips and Sun Records, "That's All Right, Mama."
Mr. Ludlow.
Colleagues asked that we adjourn in the memory of Robert Mariucci Jr. Some of you may have read about his death recently in the paper, and often we take a moment to acknowledge people who have accomplished great things in their life and are known throughout the country. This is a young guy who struggled with drugs for most of his life and moved in and out of rehab centers in his fact of one point in his life, joined with his family to start a drug rehab center. Just this past week, he probably read that about 6:40 p.m., a group of suspected gang members chased Mr. Mariucci from Rimpa Boulevard to the 4,800 block of St. Elmo Drive. Mariucci fell as he was trying to escape, and was struck in the head by a brick that one of the gang members threw as he screamed for help. Mariucci's father believes his son may have actually been searching for drugs at the time of his death. However, it's unclear as to why he was there. We do know that Mariucci's death drew laughs from the gang members, who allegedly chased him down, and bludgeoned him with a concrete block. The witnesses in the area, myself included, all of us who debated issues today, I would ask that we keep this in mind as we hopefully search for killers involved in this case. Rest in peace. Congratulations on trying to save your life.
Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the votes. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.